Yeah, honey. Hello, sound check.
Can you guys see me?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Everything perfect.
I'll be over in a bit, just grabbing some food before it come off. Um, are, have we done the sound checks we need to do?
Uh, it looks like everything's running properly here, so I think we're good.
Okay, and we are recording?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay, cool. And YouTube done?
I'm working on it.
Okay, that's fine, that's one.
Two and a three in bad, right?
What's that?
Didn't all crash like right?
She said two out of three in bad.
I will say, what we just talked there was hard to understand.
Nothing.
It was a, okay. So, welcome everyone to the, what is it, July sixteenth? Twenty twenty-four BOT meeting. Macy? Is it Macy or is it Britt? Who's, who's, I see Macy's name, but who's taking?
On and I'm in the room.
Okay, Macy, when you're ready, could you please take roll call? I'm assuming we have Coram, and I may be wrong.
We do have Coram, yes.
Macy, we can't hear you.
I'll do it. I'm not sure what's going on, so there's, uh, trustee Todd. Trustee Maris. Trustee Miller. Mayor Proton Sterling. Here. Mayor Billy. Or Mayor Giblin. And that's all who's here. Trustee Larson is absent. Trustee Larson is absent.
Larson's absent, I think trustee Corvone would be out here. All right, well, thanks, everybody. So, I, with that, we will just go right into our consent agenda. We just have a couple items. Thank you all, well, minutes from two weeks ago, and then, thank you all for stepping up to be bank signers with, with the, with Nicole and I and myself and, and Jonathan and all seven trustees, I appreciate it. Any questions or comments on the minutes or on the check bank signers?
Yeah, any questions on the base centers? I don't know if you raise your hand or if you were all told, but I think we, it's, it's helpful to have multiple base signers in case Billy and I are not around, or, you know, people on vacation here and there, so. So we're all on there now.
Get them.
Thanks. Thanks, Britt. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we have motion second. I'll just say one thing. In general, you all won't be bothered that we, the, the, not bothered, but, um, the checks get cut generally every two weeks, right around Thursday afternoon. But it, it generally won't rope everyone in. It just will be, we'll move on to other trustees when, when we can't cover it, so. With that, if there's any other discussion, no more discussion, we'll go to a roll call. Yes.
I have, I had to call in because you guys couldn't hear me, so sorry.
You are loud and clear enough.
Mayor Billy.
Here.
Mayor Proton Sterling.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I don't see trustee Corvone online yet, but note for the record that she should be joining us. Uh, trustee Mary.
Hold on, just to clarify, Macy, are you taking roll call?
No, I, I, I said that and I.
For the record that trustee Corvone would be joining.
Okay, so are you taking, are you taking, uh, who, approves of the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, Macy, we're getting really bad feedback from you. We're just gonna have Britt take, uh, there was, yes, there was motion. Right, yeah, just Peter, emotionally.
And so, I'm gonna start it again. Uh, trustee Corvone joined at seven oh four, so I'm gonna start with trustee Corvone.
We're, we're voting on the consent agenda.
Correct, sorry.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton Sterling. Yes, trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes. Billy.
Okay, thanks.
And yes. Thank you. Great, well, I appreciate that. Everyone's, with that, we will go into, um, the town administrator in introduction, and I will take it from here. Um, Dr. Miranda Fisher moved on to, um, Camp Verde, Arizona as our new town manager to move ahead with her career, and we're grateful for everything she did for us, all her work, and all all that she helped us accomplish, and we wish her the best luck in her next stage of her career, and, um, so we interviewed a lot of folks. Um, we were, well, we got over thirty applicants, narrowed it down to nineteen completed applications, and then from there, we, um, fairly painstakingly got to the point of picking four, uh, all of which had experience in town administration, and then had a very robust, um, interview process with three different groups interviewing, as well as a tour, um, of the town throughout the day, and all four applicants were round robinning throughout those four places. And then, uh, uh, meet and greet that night, and, um, Jonathan Kane was who we chose to be our new town administrator, and he accepted, and he is, um, here with us now. Jonathan's been with us great day, this is, this is his seventh workday, and, um, started last Monday, the eighth, and prior to that, he was, uh, working at Idaho Springs as assistant city administrator, and he also, you know, while he was doing that job, he was the interim community development planner until in twenty-three, and served with the Clear Creek County Economic Development Corporation as their director of community relations and engagement, and before that, he used to work in Gilpin County as director of Parks and Rec. So, um, Jonathan, thanks for accepting the position, and, um, you've definitely hit the ground running, and we appreciate what you're bringing.
It's been great to be here so far. I appreciate all the expectations, it brings that kind of speed, and I'm just happy to be here. It's worked, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, John, absolutely, thanks.
Okay, is it up here for you to move on to the next item?
Yeah, I've been talking. Did anyone else have anything to say about Jonathan before we move on? If, if not, um, feel free to welcome him on your own, and, um, Britt, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is going to talk to us about the update, um, the camp plan.
Sorry. I did not know it was.
Are you not, I mean, and actually, I saw your name so much on today's agenda, I, I guess I plugged you into this too, since you gave this to us, but, um,
Do we have the SE group on?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have SE group with us, but we decided that Britt, um, would be best to be the connection if anybody did have a question, so she could relay them to SE group.
Okay, thanks. That was, that was probably what's in my head. Britt, sorry, we weren't super clear.
Totally, hey, yeah, so they provided, um, in your packet, um, kind of an update, uh, via just document, um, and I believe they will be, uh, in an August meeting. Um, and they will also be at the next PC meeting, which you guys will see those updates in my staff report. But if you have any questions or want me to relay anything to them, please let me know.
And it's just like a page, page and a half summary of, of kind of this present status of things with the camp plan.
Yeah, you'll start seeing more updates really in the next month or two, some of those drafts coming before you. All right, we're all good here.
Okay, cool. And that will move on to staff reports, town staff reports. Any questions for town staff from the trustees?
So Rita, are you on?
I don't think Rita's on.
Rita's not, okay. Well, I'll fire some questions away and see how good we can do it, and then I'll follow up with Rita. Um, because I forgot to report. So there's a decrease in revenue in law enforcement, the amount of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-two, does anybody know what that's attributed to, and, you know? For, for giving officer or sergeant, how should I, sergeant, sergeant, thank you, jet five, okay, jet. Uh, so wondering if anybody has any insights to this stuff? And if not, that's okay.
Oh, you guys heard me?
Yeah.
The only thing that I can think of is, is that I know that Dr. Man, uh, extra duty, where it's been ten days a month for the law for traffic, for safety purposes. Um, and I know that that was down to ten. Um, originally, we were doing anywhere from sixteen days or eighteen days for a full month, so it's possible I'll enjoy that.
Okay.
John, could you have anything to say?
No, but I will also talk to Rita tomorrow, and we can follow up with you quickly.
Yeah, that would be helpful. So I thought my understanding is that ten was gonna kind of be the standard, and that was sort of throughout the year, but that we kind of had some ups with, you know, especially in the beginning of the year, because it was very popular, so that's what I'm trying to figure out where that deficit is coming. And regarding the, 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 um, calls of circle service, so, um, sorry, you'll be able to answer this one. Are the traffic stops included in that?
Uh, yeah, so, and then it's, I've noticed, um, on one of them, I was watching the show, um, they're articulated, uh, warnings, verbal warnings.
Yeah.
Um, and then who is summoned?
Yeah.
Stop, so, yeah.
I hate to be nitpicky about this, because this is something that we're gonna have to have a conversation around for the next budget season, is what are the calls without the traffic? All stops.
Okay.
So, like, because we need to get a feel of when is, when's the busiest time of day, like, when are we getting the most calls for service? Aside, outside of those traffic stops.
So, there's actually a graph on there for non-traffic. And then there's actually a tab on there that's for, um, it's time of calls, and it shows you, um, so it's on the Excel spreadsheet, um, or it says graphs.
Okay, and it says, okay, so I'm on the no traffic call, I think.
So you'll see that's a graph that I'll throw, but I light it up where it gives you the total calls for service, and then there in the tab that says, um,
Ah, but is it?
Traffic for graph, traffic for graph.
Oh, no, 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 I, I think, I think I know where we're getting to here. Um, do we have it per hour, but not on traffic?
So if you see at the top, it says, uh, the time of calls. If you look at that, it actually shows, um, the time of calls, um, and I'll probably see that tab. It's actually called, um, time of, time of calls, June twenty-four time of calls.
We have that in the spreadsheet, which I think we just have sort of snapshot.
Yeah, we have a PDF with some things maybe pulled from it, or, or generated from it.
So they could be in the tab, and I don't, I don't, you guys have?
Yes.
Sure.
That, right there. So, um, what it's showing is, so, the hour is basically eleven PM, it's still in the military. Midnight one, uh, there's no calls up to eight AM, and I'm doing forty-four, so, so you can see your calls that were just told at nine. And so this is the hour, if you can just look it up.
Right, and those, in, the, that's the background that you're talking about right now, those include traffic calls, correct?
Um, uh, uh, no, these are just the calls for service.
Those are just calls for service. They have no traffic calls in them.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I wanted. That's what I was saying.
One of you guys, um, at the beginning of work, shows how many are traffic stops, how many are traffic gets assigned.
Perfect. That's just what I wanted to clarify. Okay, that's exactly what that graph was, that it did not include traffic calls, because when we're trying to figure out when's the busiest time that we're getting these calls for service.
And I think the reason why we had that is just to show you guys, um, you know, what you need for how many deputies, exactly, so if you all want to keep doing this.
Good, please. Yep, yep, this is, this is, that will be, uh.
Can, can I interrupt one sec? It's really hard to sort things out with y'all talking. It's just echoey, and, and also not having a spreadsheet, none of us are getting a visual on, on these times. Can we, can we get it on the screen?
Oh, gotcha.
Yes, one second.
Hell, it's not gonna work.
It's on page forty-four, right, when you, or you know?
Oh, I didn't go far enough.
Yeah, you got it, yes. It's all the fact that it's on page forty-four. So, again, just to clarify for everyone, I wanted to make sure traffic stops were not included in these numbers, that these are real, just everything else calls for service.
Um, real quick, so page forty-four, that, that HOD hours of the day, is, is that, am I, am I correct?
Yep, yep, hours of the day, so starting.
Uh, hi, our most, and you're right, I agree with you, like, we need to know what's what, but it looks like from ten AM to seven, maybe even nines or? Ten to, ten to seven.
We can, we can probably like put together a report, work together, and come up with a monthly basis, you can see there's peaks and then seasons, maybe two, and just come up with a report that shows, so you can get a year looking forward, yeah.
A year to date would be interesting as well, and we probably have this data over the past couple of years. That would also be interesting, just to see how it all hits out.
Um, so information was actually sent, and I could get it to you guys all again, so we ended up getting data from twenty-one team all the way up to this point.
Yeah.
Just to give you guys an idea of how the calls, so there's a network this change, and what hasn't changed. Um, I could go back, I'm all certain, I thought I'd, uh, Mason, but, oh, cool, yeah.
Well, you know, we got small attention spans here, so, it's always worth the name. Since we're, um, just kind of in our first cycle of having deputies, have, you know, here, um, it's feeling like everything is flowing smoothly since all that transition.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, uh, trying to get used to like the events, things that are going on, uh, who we communicate with and how we communicate. Um, obviously with Jonathan just starting, um, I think being in the, I was ever reading, I don't know, the cloud read a little better about our first trip, I think. Right now, it's just sort of between the office, it's just good from, uh, living, it's not having that sweet combination, so I think the both of us coming in, you at the same time. Um, but outside of that, everything else, intensive heat out in the weather, so, um, and we're out there with this role, um, everyone seems to be happy, so I'm always saying, feel the place, very cool.
Yeah, we've seen you guys growing, growing with the time. Um, I have a couple more questions. Um, does anybody know the grant funding for the housing coordinator starts?
Um, so we have our meeting with Lyons Thursday to talk logistics of that.
Okay.
Um, so we'll have more information on it, but as of right now, if everyone doesn't know, we got awarded, um, the MPC grant for the shared housing coordinator with, uh, Lyons, uh, for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we will have more logistics here soon.
Agreed. And then my last question is, is Peter online?
He is not online, but he's entering up our comments.
Okay, all right, so my, my only comment was, because he was talking about giving, coming back with the tourism presentation that ended in December for adoption. There was a lot of feedback. I would almost prefer that to be another discussion item, other than a let's take action and adopt, if it's possible, unless there's going to be a lot more circulation or whatnot.
I think I can answer a little bit on that. We have a one-on-one schedule on the twenty-fourth, that's that, and I think one of the, there's some other board direction that I think we guys have wanted to see in regard to that person playing.
Yeah.
So we were gonna do a little bit of work on that and figure it out, but that was just based on the initial timeline, so we may need to look at that just a little bit to make sure that we fit all of that work towards where he's, so. And I, we can provide an update on it, maybe after that.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be helpful, because there, there was a lot of feedback, and I think it would be hard in just one more conversation to move to adoption, unless it all picks one to end, but, uh, anyways, just, uh, that's it for me.
Um, this is Tanya. Nicole, where, where are you reading the feedback that you, I haven't seen any comments coming in?
So, so it was, was that, it may have been presented at the last meeting that you may not have been at, yeah?
Yeah, I got, I got it at the DDA meeting. I feel like you gave this to us a couple months ago also, so. But I'm just curious, like, are, are you getting feedback from residents about it, or?
I think that's the next step, is also to get some more circulation amongst residents and citizens, and get some feedback as well.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have a couple questions about the budget too, since we're on the topic.
Yeah.
What, why are we lacking all the grants that were pro- projected to, we, there's like a six hundred thousand dollar deficit under the grant category? And I'm wondering, why didn't we think we were gonna have more money than we do?
I think that we'll see that money coming in, to, to, and safer Main Streets grants are the big reasons, and that's.
Oh.
So, on the coming year, we also had a meeting this week about the trucking stations, and so once that's complete, those are all reimbursements, and so I am still hopeful that we'll see those monies in the budget. One thing I do want to talk about with you guys maybe a little bit, is a little bit of reorganization of the budget to take those, uh, single-use grants out of the general fund, and maybe put them into a special fund, so it's a little bit easier to track our own source revenue, but that's something that we'll talk about the budget, yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, with the visitor center, it's down quite a bit. Is that twenty-two thousand dollars projected? That's what they had made year-to-date this time last year? And we've only made like seven or eight grand, and, or what, what is that?
I think that may have to do with when you're able to staff it, but I will talk to Peter about that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, if we had done, you know, because we, we had budgeted twenty-two, I'm just throwing out that number, I'm not looking at it right now, twenty-two thousand for the visitor center, and we only made like eight this time year-to-date, is what it's saying, so I'm just curious, like, wow, that's a big difference in income, and not substantial, not, you know, not gonna make a real big difference in the general fund, but just curious is all.
Cool, anything else, Ty?
No, sorry. I muted. Yeah, no. Thanks.
Any trustees in the, bring up any other comments? Okay, we're good in here, Mayor Billy.
Yeah, okay, thank you, um. Well, thank you all for the comprehensive staff reports and, and the good information. Sorry, Sergeant Jeffrey, I, I didn't, um, sort out that, what that table was for a while, um, on the days of the week, or days of the, hours of the day. And, uh, with that, we'll go on to, uh, BOT reports. Anything else to add, or any questions for us about the BOT reports?
Any questions, have questions to ask the one? Pretty good. Right, you're good in.
Sounds good. Well, with that, we will go to our next, um, our next item, which is our first action item, industrial pretreatment ordinance. And I do believe Andrew is gonna take us with the same.
Good, thank you, Mayor. This, this pre-treatment ordinance was discussed with Board of, June the eighteenth, um, meeting, where we got directed, um, to share the ordinance with businesses, to bring it back for, for adoption at this meeting. Uh, previously brought this to the Board of Trustees in April two thousand twenty-three for discussion. We made a few, so a few, a few slight changes to, um, the ordinance, and, uh, before I do mention, talk about that, we shared the ordinance with our business, uh, email list. We've got a lot of people thinking of. And, um, they wrote a really bad email about good explanation first, um, and got some questions and concerns from people. And so I believe this trustee Corvone requested that I put out a, uh, an email with more simplified language and examples from the town of Lyons and Idaho Springs, which I did, and, uh, all the conversations with businesses after that seemed to, uh, uh, that seemed to help, um, some of the concerns were about the industrial pretreatment requirements we're gonna apply to restaurants. And that's, I was on sure the restaurants basically need to maintain their system re-strat, make sure staff are not using properly, and they didn't pump that, um, but they don't need digital requirements that the industrial, um, users were equipped, um, required, and after some discussions, we clarified, um, the appeal process, and, um, I thought, like, but we did have a requirement for, um, oh, we're advising industrial users, after discussions of looking at Idaho Springs and Lyons, um, ordinance, they didn't require, they need to require that either, um, so I might turn it over to a attorney, and sit down to discuss the languages, or maybe later. I'm sure one, was a good time to discuss the language changes, because I also made a mistake that it needs to add this, and see the, uh, the version that got uploaded to the agenda, and some of the things remain, been getting included by the office, so, we're, we're pretty much, something else to address that, sorry.
So there was a, a request from Andrew Bliss to remove language in the ordinance related to, um, installation of a health doctor.
Flow leader device.
Flow leader device, that's in, uh, thirteen thirty-five, it's section C. Uh, and that language remains in the ordinance, um, and it requires industrial users to install this flow leader device, but, uh, the intent is that not be in there, so we don't really have discretion when it says they shall enforce it. We don't have discretion to say, no, no, we didn't mean that, we don't have to enforce it. So basically, the request is, instead of coming back at a, at a later meeting to have you approve this, if you all would like to approve this tonight, I would ask that you give your motion, include an amendment to amend section thirteen thirty-five C to remove that, that entire section.
Is the installation of the flow leader?
Correct.
Maybe, maybe, Andrew, you can explain why that statement was.
Yeah, uh, so, so part of this is understanding how the waste is coming from industrial users, and part of that is the concentration of, what's, what's the concentration of the waste that's in the water, and then also how much of that water is coming down from the business? Um, so a flow leader device would help calculate, you know, if what's coming out through the sewer is very different from what the water is. So a flow meter device would help calculate, you know, if what's coming out through the sewer is very different from what the water is. It's just a flow meter device fit help a business say, hey, we're using a lot of water, but not a lot of water is going through our sewer. So they would be allowed to install it if they want to, if it helps them, but I don't think we should require it if they. Uh, John has shared that there's ways to calculate that flow coming out of the business. There's kind of, I think it's state, state say there's some, how many, that'd be something to make sure of the business. That is 100% my fault. I apologize.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I do. This is Tanya. Um, water can't be more than 100 degrees going down the drain. That seems a little bit difficult to, um, well, A, enforce and B, request.
Yeah, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, those, those standards are all kind of standard, um, water quality parameters that I believe that comes from the science from the state. And we'll see other communities have those. We are able to, when we sample, we are able to, um, we have grown the temperature. So we are able to measure temperature very quickly. So it's possible for us to monitor that. The, the thinking that if a large quantity of high temperature water comes into our wastewater plant, it could negatively impact our biological freedom process. We're cultivating biology of wastewater plants. So a large change, increase in temperature could negatively impact that wastewater point. And we also have to monitor the, the temperature leaving our wastewater plants 24/7. And I don't believe we have specific limit for temperature, but I imagine that if, if on the temperature of water leaving our, our wastewater plants increases too high, the state creates concerns about it.
Well, have you noticed the discharge coming out hot when you measure yours?
Uh, no. No, no, I, I don't expect to have an issue with high temperature water, um, in our.
It seems like a, a really good dishwasher might be coming out at about 100 degrees.
Yeah, it's, you know, when it's mixed in with all your other use, I think the entire pool probably between the dishwasher and, and the system. Uh, I, I don't, you know, I don't expect it to be, um, to, I don't expect it to be issue, but I would just advocate for keeping it in since it is kind of a standard slate of requirements that are by, by the, by the state and other communities implemented by their communities.
Have you had a chance to talk to the restaurants about that, making sure that they not going to affect their cooking or?
Um, after, so I sent that follow-up email after your email to the business list and I spoke to one landlord that has several restaurants that, that leases property. And then I spoke to the property manager of the Caribou Village Center and their concerns from restaurants appeared to be alleviated once they understood they had to maintain their existing equipment and not install other equipment.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So throughout this, because it seems like one of the, one of the folks that could be impacted and have to install an equipment is breweries or am I incorrect on?
That is correct.
Okay. So do we have a covenant estimate or an understanding of what that impact might be in terms of monetary dollars or anything?
No, I don't. Um, the example I know is not at root to the town. Enforce these requirements on them because they had a development process that had been approved by the town. So for them, the, I think the major expense was probably the, um, the monitoring. They had a, um, they had to solve a little tank that we can then walk up and put up with a couple of simple. Yeah. So that's probably the, your expense is what I understand. Everything else they do is more like process control. So they, they remove the grain from their bats and I'm, and I'm not a brewer and I don't brew here. So I'm trying to, I guess too much maybe of myself. Uh, but I guess bottom line though, other than that, my understanding is the, the changes they made were best practices that were situated and not absolute.
Okay, got it. So it's all part of the process, not necessarily, like you said, the equipment.
Yeah.
But as a part of this, will there have to be new equipment installed?
Yeah. So we still have the, we need to have, be able to sample wastewater somehow. Buzy Brews, for example, their service line comes out into a manhole down that far below the road service. So we can get a sample, probably they'd easily get a sample. Um, I believe we have representatives very nice here. I'm not sure if they know if there's a way to sample wastewater, but that, that if there's no way to sample the wastewater coming from industrial use, we need, we need to be able to sample that. Otherwise, we can't enforce it.
Got it. So that's the additional cost specifically like breweries or other industrial users of that, that ability to sample.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't know if there's other improvements that might be needed. But my understanding is a lot can be addressed through, um, process control changes in your, how you do it. Another, another thing that I'm sure that is, uh, you can do is instead of releasing, you know, a heavy flow all at once, you can dribble it out slowly. So again, change in practice will then impact what's going to be the wastewater.
Thank you. Do we have any permission in here if, if, you know, but small business working assistance installing something that is, you know, kind of down there means? Is that so that the town is, it has the possibility to assist with?
There's no provision in this ordinance for that. Uh, there's, there's no, nothing budgeted or an issue here for that that I'm aware of. And we'll say this is to begin 2025, 2025. So the board is interested in that. It's a, uh, also, I was already boss here, John. You know, I would imagine one of them made that very discussion for the 2025 budgets.
Any other clarifying questions in the room?
Uh, I have one up here.
Yeah.
Well, I, and you might have, and maybe I missed it. So apologies, but you have spoken to the three breweries in town about how this, this is gonna, um, like how difficult, what's, you said that not a root already does this already, but the separation of the grains for the compost. Do the other breweries already do that as well? Or is this going to be?
Uh, no, I have not had discussions with the other breweries in town. Speaking with John, we plan to do one-on-one meetings with anyone we think might be impacted by this between now and the effective date you pointed out.
I personally would love us to come back with the amendment already, ordinance already amended and these discussions with the owners already done prior to approving it. That's me personally. It seems like it would just be more information for us to know.
What, what, what specifically would you be wanting to have?
Uh, well, you just get the one-on-ones just so that I don't want to blindside anybody who's not paying attention. Um, I know we can't be responsible if someone's not paying attention, but I, I just want the one-on-ones. I feel like our town is small. We have very few restaurants and a few breweries and it would go a long way, um, to everybody understanding and for any concerns to be spoken to versus just like in an email or on social media. Um, I think it's the least we could do. It's, it would seem that difficult.
But that makes sense. I, I mean, what kind of time and do, do we have a deadline or a timeframe that we have to be kind of cognizant of? And also like, have you not had conversations already with the three breweries?
Right. Yeah. No, I've not had discussions directly with very names or UC about this. Not a respite, but we've had discussion about their characteristics before. There's no deadline. Um, yes, I would, I would hope that we keep the effective date of 2025. Um, there's no deadline that I'm aware of for approval. Uh, I just will comment that my understanding is this is something that the town has been putting for years and it is a requirement for a discharge permit. And so I agree, it's only reasonable to talk to breweries. I'm embarrassed that I didn't do it, but there's only so much time in a day. And sometimes things like this get pushed off. Uh, but I guess I just push for bringing it back quickly and keeping that, uh, date of, of, uh, the, the, the date generally.
Well, I'm a clear question around that. Um, I guess my question is, there is no alternative. Like there's, there's no alternative that let's say a brewery or any industrial user could go a route of, right? It's like, we have to have the ability to monitor. It's, it's through, or like you said, for us to get our permitting. So what does, having the conversation with, you know, before this would be approved would be kind of a nice thing to do, but the reality is there's no wiggle room out of it, if I'm to interpret this correctly.
Right. Yeah. For the most, for the most part, this is all boilerplate requirement set that the, that the city has. There's, um, you know, I never, I never want to say never, that it's going to be something, but yeah, most of this is pretty boilerplate stuff. Um, and just to clarify, we, we already have a discharge permit. It's just as part of that discharge permit, we need to have an industrial pre-treatment program.
Right.
So it just helps us comply with our system.
Yep. So it's for compliance. There's no other routes for, um, these potential folks to take. It would, you know, with conversations, but we'd still have to get it to adoption.
We would need to get something to the adoption. And this is what I was talking about. And this is all like a standard for a town or any city, correct? Like we're just kind of catching up here. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So this was drafted by the town's engineer, JBA, and they used examples from other communities to draft this and our contractor, RC, who is kind of our state liaison for operating our water wastewater system. His career is really been spent starting in the pre-industrial pre-treatment and this stuff. Well, and, uh, you know, his, his, he reviewed this and his, his goal was making sure that we've got what we need to comply with. And, um, they, this was, didn't come out of, um, the air and that, you know, attorney Matt said, I'm not sure how much experience you have this with other communities, but, uh, you know, looking at, at those springs and lines, it's, it's very, very strong. And I'm just facing the subject, trustee Sterling, like, if, if you're, just to be clear, you were saying there's not really any like over by the, the, it's kind of just standard. You're asking if there's any other corrections that can go, right?
Right. And I mean, we stole stuff from, from, we were legally borrowing, you know, language and stuff from, I was wearing a study. You can speak better than us than anybody.
Yeah, there are two big breweries in Idaho Springs and the Ciderine. It used to be a still, so those were the primary industries that were affected by our ordinance. And we, in, in the time I was there, we did work with all of them to try to manage their costs. And it's that we recently started a program where we subtracted the gallons of beer produced from their sewage, which is something that we did to get around the, the flow meter issue because of the flow meter, you also have to, we were just talking this morning. There needs to be a flow that could potentially be an expensive upgrade, but there's some other ways you can do it. Just look away to state documents production. That may not work for everyone, but it worked for the cases here. So I think that ultimately we are seeing a huge increase in cost for any of them.
Okay. And that's, and that's what I'm trying to get at is that there may be like, and you alluded to this early, there may be process things that can be done, right? Or there may be things that town can work with, process things that can be done, but overall we need to be in compliance with this ordinance and put it into adoption and then how town staff deals with each person, each, each entity to be determined. Okay.
Let me, my house will just, um, point in clarification here that another way to do this, you can approve it tonight with an amendment. And decide to hold it, have Andrew have those conversations, come back with a fee ordinance at a later date. Uh, and then the other option, if you approve it tonight, is we can always amend it.
Right.
So we have the effective date of June 1, 2025, but we can amend it between now and June 1, 2025. So that's easy.
Agreed.
What, what kind of amendments are people thinking? Like, I'm just curious.
Well, there's, there is one amendment that, um, that Andrew and I did catch before it went into the packet. That's that it's required, an industrial user is required to have a flow meter device installed. And that wasn't the intent to have that as a requirement. And so that's the, that's the request at least today to take that out of their ordinance.
That's what she was talking about before, but I think if there are other conversations that happen, right, with the, not just breweries, but any industrial user within municipal that there could be suggestions, changes, things that come to light that, oh, that's excellent point. We have thought about that. You know, we can always amend it over your time. Any other clarifying questions here in the room before we kick it to Mayor Billy?
Yeah. No, if you don't have any more, I'd like to go to public comment. Um, I'm about to walk in, but how about if we go online first since I can monitor that and then I'll be inside to see who's in the room.
Okay.
Uh, well, let's go ahead and just go to public comment. So anyone online, if there's a comment you'd like to make on this, speak up, please.
Just walk on up here.
Oh, hold on just a sec. We're, we're doing online first.
Oh, online, sorry.
Yeah, you, you, you can get ready because it's looking pretty, pretty quiet online, but I'll give it another few seconds. Anyone online have any public comment? If not, go ahead. Um.
Yes, come on down.
Oh, yeah. I didn't, I haven't seen anything, anything amended. So I'll look at it.
All of this, can you state your name and your relationship to town?
Sure. Jeffrey Green, very nice brewing company. We've been open in 2012.
Thanks.
So I didn't see anything amended, but what I've seen was all three weeks ago, I think. So I, I don't have the, those up today. To this gentleman's point, um, well, I need to talk, that's Oscar Blues and Idaho Springs. That's Tommy. They literally spilled probably a second more than a brewery here. Um, so it's really weird to have that.
Wait, can you clarify what you mean by that?
I mean, that the amounts they brew, they brew in the hundreds of thousands of barrels. I brewed, uh, last year at this facility, 150.
I see. Okay.
Okay.
So you're saying the, the volume at which they produce is astronomical. It's astronomical.
It's a business. It really is. Um, and so, yeah, industrial waste coming from a brewery like that. Sure. I understand the concerns, but I mean, we operated for 10 plus years without a blood from anybody. Um, as far as water quality goes or anything to that, we did open a new facility in Oakland, so we'll probably go down even to less. We're going to use this system as a pilot system. So 150, 180 barrels a year, we're likely down to maybe 25. And, um, so these regulations are pretty boners on companies such as myself. We have a very low operating margin as far as being able to produce beer and all that. So I guess we can only get ingredients at high prices because we can't buy like the other guys. So it's really a different business. Um, and yeah, I mean, I was also coming in here because, you know, we were supporting the facility now. Um, so I was supposed to mostly come in here for while the restaurants and things like that. And because I can see the updates as far as that, but as far as being able to even test our stuff, it's probably the only thing we can do because we shared the sewer line with the entire building. So for example, while there, there was a toilet, he's in the toilet there and it backs it up. We, you know, are affected by that. So there's no place where it's just our, um, that I can think of. Uh, we've always been pretty careful as far as watching how much water we use and all this sort of thing, but I mean, mainly again, to this point, I'd like to see something in there that, you know, applies to regulations when you can pass a certain amount of product that you produce. Like I said, we're not even, you weren't looking on the radar for a decade until the other breweries came in. until the other breweries came in. I'm not blaming them. In fact, the other part of this is, I didn't, one, I don't know any other brewery that signs these regulations. Probably back to a boss. And the other thing is, you know, I just really would encourage, instead of putting these types of regulations. And let me ask you a question real quick. So I know that it's important to have a larger program, but what you have in that program is up to you guys. So it's having the, that's what, that's a question.
Right, yeah, that's correct. Our, our program requires to have an industrial pre-treatment program. I mean, they provide the guidance on what's included in the typical pre-treatment program. And it's, yeah, okay.
So if you can't, that's not regulated by state or anything?
Yeah, it's actually regulated by the, the EPA, but, you know, I think, I think there's, you know, what, what I know is, what's in our program is we have to have a program. And so we have to design a program. So, yeah, I mean, the very next group company is a glorified number system. And that's what operates there, because that will probably cut that down 20% of what we can have in there too. So there's that, but, you know, to go beyond a sort of bigger picture, you know, 10% sales tax, that's what we did, 10% on every dollar. I know that all that 10% goes to that, other goes to build the county. But I don't think it's huge for businesses to feel like, hey, that money should be used to complete an infrastructure. And, you know, I would feel like, if you, if any of you gets lost in this, you're just losing income. And over time, you know, if you increase your infrastructure, you get more small businesses that can now afford to come in because the infrastructure is there, that's more income. I feel that projects like the teen center, daycare, I think those are wonderful projects. I want to see them. But building those buildings, building those facilities is a business compared to the upkeep and maintenance and operating of those businesses. You're gonna need long-term people. And, you know, once businesses leave here, if they do, I don't want to be doom state, but if they do, it's really hard for them to come back. So I'd like to see, you know, you have to have a program. And, but I'd love to see that program be flexible enough where it doesn't apply across the board to every single type of business that's there. Again, the barrel is there, but I just would like to see a real concentration on infrastructure that produces a long-term income for the town. So that long-term projects such as teen centers and daycares, things like that, can actually be supported by a really nice first tax base. So that's what I would like to see. And that's about it. Can I ask you, like, what is, like, can you, like, make sure for yourself with this?
Yeah. So, yeah, monitoring everything that goes down our rooms there. So I've been assuming, because restaurants are affected by this, the taproom. Be affected by this, the taprooms aren't nearly any other taproom in town.
Good. You're not gonna be brewing here anymore?
We brew very little, but, yeah, I didn't want to lose the sight of the infrastructure. Instead of putting the, you know, responsibility of the business. Now, in yoga count, we have a 2.9%, you know, sales tax. I expect to have to do everything myself. When it's 10%, you know, and, and we, we give it up our least worst for the shares department, which I absolutely agree with, because I live there, but we've always had a shared department. They do an awesome job. So, you know, I believe there was some tax loans or some, 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 some department for the shares. I just feel like there should be some money to improve infrastructure. And that infrastructure will then support small businesses such as ours, which will then be income, a lot of income, 10% sales tax. You only have a ton of 10% sales tax in New York, you know, with a water pump, it actually is 10%. Do you ask water pump? So, yeah, and I don't know what kind of infrastructure water pump has invested in, that operates in pretty busy areas and things like that. So I've said, I think they have a lot of, I don't know, go on and on about that. I just think that really, that is a town benefit, long-term. The impact that all of you would, would make on the town would be huge to really concentrate on the infrastructure and not have small businesses be responsible for treating talent, all this sort of thing. I think it would really help the town to be able to support more small businesses, thus a bigger base.
I have a question, just looking at lines, it's, it's true, you know, about the amount that they brew. Their water treatment center is quite a bit bigger. Lines that we built, the catastrophe was destroyed.
Ours is bigger, or I was friends with bigger. One thing I'd note is, sometimes this is not produced, I'm using those, they're all superior anymore. They've cut that way down. And West County Down doesn't only produce like three or four hundred gallons of beer. And so what we've done, or what they've done recently is, is, yeah, sorry. Is this program where you can subtract the gross beers produced from what's going down. So here, I don't know that that's necessarily a huge issue, because you're not charging for that that strength of waste. In this particular case, you're just monitoring it. Because waste from producing beer could be like 10 to 50 times stronger than household. That's the real problem is. So one of the things that you could do is potentially adjust that waste that's coming down. Like, it really depends on what we're aiming to, it's actually very, like, an IP is a much higher strength than, than other kinds of beer, just in general. So one thing that could happen is it could be a testing, and we could come talk to you and figure out, like, maybe people are ready to entertain this also sanitation process that caused some of that to happen. And there might be ways that that could be dealt with, that would reduce that overall string potentially. I think maybe if Andrew had a chance to talk to you about that, we could look at that and see, you know, use some of the strategies we use specifically at West County, which I think really cut down on their, their concerns when we were talking about this. So that would be, if we did go to the delay, that's something that we could do pretty easily, I think. I'm not trying to speak for you, but we could probably test what, what the strength that we're into speeding is. Get a good average for that maybe.
Yeah, that, you know, very unique spirit. Not a reverse because they're in the shopping center, shimming, water and sewer. You know, you can isolate it better, so it does seem like it kind of needs to be able to customize.
You, do you have a, you pull it off your tape, like, just a sample of your tape? Or your, your, sorry, thanks for, for, what was that? You're doing this, like, whatever, you're on the computer. Yeah, like a sample of the waste after you've finished, like, just that, we're getting spent everything.
Okay, so very clever, right? That's all there is so far. But, yeah, it'd be like the true, the basically, hoppy tier company. And then, yeah, then you would have sterilizer and a detergent. And each one of those, that's pretty, you know, out of, you know, the categories. So, you know, it's more of when they get put together, maybe a lot of them neutralize each other. And all that sort of thing, so, I don't know, I mean, it seems like you'd have to have just a pipe that comes from us and isolates everybody else. Or eliminates everybody else from that, to see what to do. And so then I have some people to test over during the time, it'll be an hour or a day or a week or what.
Really depends on what I'm hearing, if that's what.
Well, I mean, my kids drunk or alcohol, right, but it's not going to sit in something like that, right?
But what, what I think Andrew needs to know is what the actual strength coming from that is and anticipated be. So he understands that the effect on the biological would be a complaint. And that's where the question would be. And so I think what the question would be is, is there's a place to sample that, where we could get an idea? Because to your point, if there is some possibility, where maybe there could be some volumetric calculations done there, that could be amendment to state ordinance, I think that's the information that people want to have.
Because I think, and I think this is a good clarification point. It doesn't matter the output, how many gallons or barrels, or it's the, it's the, you know, the strength of the output is what we're working to get at.
It's outrageous.
And there's just power.
It might only have to be done with it.
It's possible it could be to our water treatment, that's ultimately what we have to get at. Irregardless of how many gallons are being produced.
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out how to test that. I mean, I don't have any space to have a giant container where I can put everything in for over a day or a week or anything like that. We, we have sample cups, so, I mean, if we can dip into something, or like, those, you know, actually bleeding or something like that. That, that would be great. And, you know, one, I will say, all quantity does play a factor here. So, you know, a million gallons at a high concentration is way more waste than 10 gallons at the same concentration. So, so volume does apply here. And I don't want to turn it, put it turning this fast on the spot, except on the table times.
Oh, she learned it.
My, my reading on this would be, you know, this applies to industrial wastes in industrial users. I don't think depending on, you know, how much they're doing, what, what they're discharging into the, the drainage. It's possible that, that you're not an industrial user. This, and this doesn't, you know, specifically say it has to apply to every single brewery in town.
But, yeah, I mean, do we need to just define industrial? Do we have industrial services? Yeah, there'd be bosses setting this up for how we do it, not a two, like. Do we have a good definition of industrial?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, but it's probably not a great definition. I do think it could be refined more and clarified with more details. I mean, it's an industrial, it's industrial, industrial user means an owner that is a source of industrial discharge. And then just industrial discharge means the discharge of industrial process treated wastewater or wastewater of the sewer. So that's, that's a part that could be clarified.
It's like a circuitry. The, there is a state form that says how many barrels of beer you produce that you fill up pressure. That form would be used to back into the number, because we can estimate how much water is used to produce whatever kind of beer you're making. And then if we had a baseline number for sampling, you could determine what the waste is and what the active back of the plant is from that waste using the form that we use for your produce, and it would be documentable.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, in UC as well as not a rich, they're probably producing very small fraction of water, of Oscar Blue supporting. Like you said, those guys are hundreds of thousands of barrels. I would, I have no idea what I would produce, but I would expect it's probably not any more than 2,000 to 5,000 barrels, you know. So, yeah, I don't know. That's true, the, they may be smaller, but we're, we're also a small system.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to ask you earlier, because kind of like, we got to figure out how big is sewage plant? And Oscar Blue is destroying my sewage plant, so, I mean, we can't let that happen. We just got to figure out, but I think we got to customize it. These conversations, whether we set the dates and then whatever. This conversation is all customized, you're kind of figuring out what to share, like, quantum.
Is it VOD and ESS that you're looking at? Yeah, that's really important.
The most important part of VOD, so it's a measurement of organic waste. And, and your, your waste can have a really high concentration. And so that's, that's really considered, right? Yeah, so, I mean, I think the only way to really measure our specific process is to come in during each process that the beer goes to over a month and take a sample at a time. But again, I would love to see, like I said, these, these are pretty small breweries. I don't know how much the dead plant can take right now, but it seems like a pretty modest investment to treat it over at the plant rather than try and go out and, you know, put dealing this on every small business. But.
Would that be a modest investment?
I'm talking about, I mean, I know that any investment is probably a lot, but.
Well, again, this is, this is monitoring too. Like, going back to what, you know, town manager Kane said, this is monitoring. So as long as we're monitoring and we're putting the processes in place to make sure it's not affecting the biodiversity of the plant, we're okay. Nobody has to treat anything, as long as that's happening.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, it could be the only business in the shopping center that needs to be monitored.
Sure.
I'm assuming the land was, and, and just for me. And again, it's gonna be everybody's, including the restaurants as well.
That's why we have perhaps another method, back into it, through your forks that you supply to the state. Is there some way that we can come in with a cup and test it? There's other ways that we're gonna make it flexible, so that we can get to our monitoring. And, you know, and if there's profit processes that you implement in order to make it, you know, better for the plant than, or win-win all the way around. But, you know, at this point, that's, that's what we're just trying to get to, is monitoring.
Kind of would be the same for all the breweries, it's just gonna be easier for the launch. It's the rest.
Okay, so I guess to say, like, I think it's, it's going to be less of an impact than what you think. I think we're gonna find ways to help you out and to make sure that it is, that we get what we need. And so that it doesn't feel like we're, we're breaking your back either, you know, from a monetary standpoint. I mean, that doesn't seem, that's not what our intention is.
Right, we definitely need to kind of figure out that, sure.
Yeah, yeah, they just, you know, imagine what we put out, I mean, can I imagine when I put a restaurant, I mean, restaurant has a lot more VOD than just like because of our sheer level of product. Well.
We're all gonna get, we're all gonna get both of our tests.
Thanks, Jen. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. I know you have great intentions about telling us how we need to handle all this business, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna go into the whole thing, but I'm, I'm a huge small business files. You know, we've, remember COVID, we put everybody's pictures on, like, almost all small businesses in town is just to promote people. This isn't just for us, like I said, it feel like the infrastructure. I mean, I was on the DDA for a while, and we needed the infrastructure back then. It's just going, saying we gave it up, so, yeah. For teen centers, for daycare, if there's infrastructure, I mean, it's gonna be more expensive to operate those businesses if we have to put in a bunch of equipment, so. That's just my, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
Any other public comments? That looks like so, online, they would have a public comment? They'll answer your questions. If not, we'll bring it back to your special.
I was thinking about, it sounds to me like there are potential other ways to track disorderance or different types of caveats that we hadn't thought of before, that maybe we should think about now. And I wonder if it's time that maybe Andrew Vanden can need to talk about whether there is a way that we can better, attorney Mattson, can need to talk about whether there's a way to better define industrial user and if there's a way to make that depend on how much waste is being produced or how many barrels of beer are being produced. It seems like that could be a determinant of what becomes industrial user is dependent only solely on what waste we are producing, or is it also depending on how much of that waste we're producing? I'm not an expert in this, and I have any readings, so these are just questions that are popping in my head as well as talking.
So you're saying that we should bring this back another time?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, one thing I'd like to talk, look at too, is those definitions seem like they're weird. Because, you know, that, there's a world of like certain definitions, they're gonna kick back at each other, they're kind of there, very quantifiable, so that's something we can do. Like, say, we're all busy, and some things get put off. Except for we prioritize, and figure out testing, whether it's the waste you're talking about, but also take a look at how do we better define this industrial waste, so that, you know, be it breweries or other industries, I don't know, it's quite, we have to be cautious, breweries, restaurants, you know, or industries like that. That big industrial waste is kind of, is pretty, it's much more clearly defined. That big industrial waste is kind of, is pretty, it's much more clearly defined.
Yeah, I think you can see how I can see how a small business like yours, really a little bit like.
I would also just question if there are other, so I know we've looked at kind of Springs, we've looked at Lions, but are there other small towns that have defined industrial user by amounts? Like, is that something that has happened for towns or would that be, that's never.
I can answer that a little bit. It is not, it's a pretty cutting edge technique. So there may be a couple out there, but I know I was my very first people. So um, we could also potentially talk to the water supervisor in Ilo Springs and look at how that works for KBB. Um, because I know this is a priority to get this, you know, we have to make sure if the permit requires this action. So we need to make sure that we keep this moving.
Yeah, what's the consequence of, so I know you said that there were no major timeline deadlines, but we keep saying that this is for the permits. And so what's the consequence of us not adopting tonight? What is that? How does that impact your day to day work?
Yeah, um, so in terms of the permit, you know, at some point, um, we're going to receive, you know, a letter from the state. Or have a state section where they bring this up, but there's no specific time table we're going to have it. But it but it could happen. The in terms of day to day operation, we are fine, everything's good. The the big thing that I worry about is triggering the design construction of a plant expansion. Uh, which could be triggered by the amount of organic waste coming into our plant. So I want to make sure that we do everything that we can to prevent it from coming to our wastewater plant. It does need to, um, so that we prolong the need to uh, design and start the uh, the project.
And like how close are we to potentially trigger that?
Yeah, it's uh, um, it's something we need to study more. And and especially, I'm certain people know more once we implement a treatment program. But I will tell you, last month, we, you know, we took one sample that did, um, it was at our limit. It's, you know, in terms of what's even in our plant, we're treating everything right, we're well alone in the gardens. But what came into our plant in terms of what we had, whether they reached our limit last month. It's not consistently, it could have been, you know, it's it's a 24 hour composite sample. And so we have a machine that takes the sample um, basically every hour, if something flows down against the plant. And, you know, it just happens while it's running and it takes a sample when we get a slug of bio organic waste. Then it sets our um, our sample off. And I thought to the previous public restorer, he observed the same, I'll be interested.
So it sounds like for the VOT here, we have a decision of whether or not to go ahead and approve with amendments later after you have the conversations. And you have, you know, talk with the water supervisor in Ilo Springs. Or you have these conversations and then we go and draft the ordinance and and approve then. May I ask town staff if you're preference because you're the ones who have to implement this?
You want to do a first?
I I would defer to you, it's your responsibility, so I fully wouldn't support.
I would prefer to revise this and bring it back to you.
Okay.
Um, certainly because I'll get the error of weeks, maybe a company too. Um, and so, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to bring it back to you. My request would be, can we keep the enforcement date of June 2020?
That would be okay with that. If we have four nouns in the room, can we put a kind of a deadline to when this comes back? So that it doesn't get too far away from us? What what feels comfortable?
Month.
Correct, so could we have that not, you know, jot it down within the next 30 days or so that this comes back to us? Just I don't want to take too far away.
Yeah.
I'm sure, do we have to move to continue or can we actually just reschedule?
Yeah, because this isn't, uh, this is a public hearing, I'm going to have to page that for I.
Oh, yeah, we like as Lions, that's a bunch of, that creep up on them, what things happen there, did they see it coming there like? How how did that, maybe you've been able or Davis, people that will talk that understand.
No, I I don't know specifically. It'd be interesting to talk about.
So it's a recall.
Yep.
So if we were to do this, you know, kind of the proposal that's on the table, come back to us in 30 days, does any VOT member, Parker, have a turn? Tanya. Tanya, this is sound okay?
So we put it, we put to like.
Yeah, you said bring it back in the month and he's going to revise it and hopefully speak with some more of the business owners to get. Everybody to be calmed down and understand more what's happening.
Yeah, yes, business owners and also other, you know, municipalities on how it's, how their particular ordinance is working. And if they would do tweaks or anything as well.
Maybe August 20.
Okay, I, do you hear me okay?
Yeah, I hear you great.
So I'm being complaints.
Okay. I'm just getting a lot of tech on this end.
That's how that was happening. Um, so yeah, we go ahead and reschedule this, keep it that. As next night, we'll reschedule for August 20th and then, you know, the last. There's a few more, a few more times.
Thanks, I I appreciate this, I think um, this feedback's going to help make it better and I appreciate, you know, just very nice group coming out, thanks. I think this will make it better all around.
Thank you. Appreciate that, um. With that, we will uh, go ahead and put this to August 20th as I said, and go to our second.
Tonight I'm starring Britt, the Fifth Street Right Away Vacation. Thanks, Jeff, thanks, Susan.
I just wanted to double check online, did that sound any better at all? Or can you guys still hear?
So much better.
Okay, awesome, okay, sorry. It, yeah, noted, we, I think we figured it out. Okay.
Oh, that's great, I didn't know it was up.
I'm so sorry, guys, that was, yeah, I'm learning. Um, yeah, so this is a right away vacation for, uh, request for Fifth Street. I feel like I'm loud, I talk loud. Um, town is the property owner is requesting the right away vacation of Fifth Street to order um, to order to expand the property boundary of the Old Town Shop Lot. On February 20th, 2024, Stephen um, from the executive director from Teens presented the request for consideration for special review use. Allowing teens to lease the town owned property at seven, 750 West Fifth Street, which is also referred to as Old Town Shop. Um, to construct a childcare facility during their SRU application presentations. Teen requested that town vacate a portion of Fifth Street in order to expand the boundary of the Old Town Shop Lot. Um, Teens had submitted the right away um, application back in March. However, due to the upcoming special election regarding the SRU, Teens is not able to seek this row vacation. Due to not having the documented rights to this property at the time, or at this time. Um, at the May 7th, 2024 meeting, the Board of Trustees approved town to be the applicant on the row vacation. Um, since the Old Town uh, Shop Lot and Fifth Street are both town owned properties. Uh, the board acknowledged that the benefit of continuing forward with the row vacation application. Is that towns seek to expand the parcel size of the Old Town Shop site regardless of its future use. At the May 21st, 2024 meeting, uh, the board approved Resolution 2024 dash 26. Authorizing the town administrator to apply for the Fifth Street Row Vacation on behalf of town. Um, I'm going to go ahead and scoot down to some of your evaluating decisions considerations that should be given. Uh, that is for the value of the land, the current use of the land, any potential future use of the land. Um, including the ability at some future time to exchange or dispose of the land in a manner that might benefit the public. Um, the public benefit of retaining the land, the public benefit in disposing the land in the manner proposed. Whether the proposed disposition is consistent with the town concert comprehensive plan in from any adjacent property owners. Non-conforming lot that can be developed otherwise because of you can, uh, unique circumst- or circumstances to create a buildable lot. Um, and the board will consider if the land could ever be used as a utility right away or if it could be a trail corridor. Um, there are photos of the site um, from a street view and an aerial view um, that you will see. There's also some previous um, right away cases noted. Um, and so staff recommendations, staff um, does not have concerns with the road vacation of Fifth Street. Initially, the fire department um, had some concerns about the engine turnaround and access issues. But town staff spoke with chief, I'm going to mess up his name, the chief um, in November. Who stated vacating Fifth Street is possible. Um, he noted he is less concerned in having a turnaround at the corner of Fifth Street and Griffin. But ensuring that there was a large enough turnaround at Fifth Street and Colson is important. Per Marshal Jocelyn, since the town is not seeking to vacate all of Fifth Street, but only a portion, there are no concerns from the fire department. However, they will want to um, review anything constructed on the site to ensure the building does not impede that ability. Um, on the June 26th, 24, 2024 meeting, uh, the PC did recommend approval of ordinance 865 to vacate Fifth Street. Um, so our questions today before you are, does the Board of Trustees approve the application to vacate Fifth Street? And if so, does the Board of Trustees recommend approval of the applications with conditions? Um, there are some attachments, um, the survey, a letter from the adjacent property owner. Um, some resolutions and the ordinance itself, um, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any clarifying questions for Britt? That was a very thorough explanation, appreciate that, which is, which helps, which sets us up well.
I'm getting used to the summarizing, but I'm pretty like detailed at.
Oh, yeah, no, that, no, that's meant as a compliment, thanks, it helps, um, there's less to clarify. No, with no clarifying questions, we'll go ahead and go to public comment, we'll go in the room first, any public comment on the Fifth Street Right Away Vacation? Online, any comments about this? Okay, uh, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and the motion.
So we had a pretty lengthy discussion on the PC about this. You know, it's uh, the neighboring, the the neighbor is willing to acquiesce their land. Um, we didn't see where there was anything that it could be used for trails or utilities. I mean, it's just this, you know, kind of creekside um, parcel of land. And I and I do want to be very clear that there is a proposal, there there's the, it's going to vote of whether or not to allow Teens Inc. On this, you know, parcel of land, that that Old Town Shop. But the reason going through this is irregardless of what happens in that election, irregardless if Teens Inc. eventually builds there. Um, doing this for that plot of land to expand its footprint. And so this is not necessarily for Teens Inc., it's it's it's, it's a piece of land that we owned. And it just makes sense to be able to to expand its footprint, so.
And just to expand on that, it benefits town regardless, but the property owner, Jeanette Smith, she is aware that, you know. If this special election, there's not a vote in favor for Teens Inc., it does go to to the town, so she and she does understand that.
Yes, it goes to the town irregardless, right, yeah.
Yeah, so even if it will become housing or some other use, you know, they'd have a bigger lot to build on, plus we could build a bigger buffer with the riparian area, so it definitely.
Much bigger footprint, yep.
I remove to recommend approval of ordinance 865 vacating West Fifth Street.
Second.
May I have a a motion in a second, any discussion? If not, um, could you or Macy take the role?
I'm happy to do it, unless Macy you want to.
Macy, are you okay if Britt takes it?
That would be great, thank you so much for your support tonight, Britt.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I'll start out with uh, trustee Maris.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
And trustee Corvallone.
Yes.
Okay.
The motion passes, thanks, everybody, um, appreciate that, and with that, we will go to our. First, sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Discussion item, the Interstate Parking and Paid Parking Trial Period. Jonathan?
Mayor trustees, at our last meeting, you gave us some direction to go ahead and implement the program starting in August. And I realize today that my staff report is a little uh, mistype in there for July, but it was August 15th is when we were going to try to start it. Um, I want to first and foremost say, staff has done a really great job of getting the program to this point and getting up something that could work. But in conversations with Interstate, we've kind of identified that there's some problems with that rollout. It's going to be difficult to sign things properly, it's going to be difficult to have the community engagement we really need to have with the community to make sure there's buy-in into the program. And it's going to be difficult to even just forecast the revenue for what that period would be. Because in the beginning, there's inevitably going to be bumps and things that we need to change and address. So in that conversation, and I've talked to Britt about this a little bit, I want to make sure she's um, got some agency in this conversation. Because this has really been something that she's brought forward. We have been kind of thinking that it would be a much better outcome for the town if we slow this down a minute and just make sure that we get it right from the get-go. And that means good signage, good equipment and a good community engagement process. Kind of to the point that we talked about last meeting where we were talking about the employees. It's really a bigger thing though, because if you think about people who don't have access to a smart device are going to have concerns about this. And kind of the questions that we really need to answer, it would be better to take a little bit more time, in my opinion, just to make sure that this is a smoother rollout. In my uh, aim, I do have two alternatives that I gave you, one would be starting the program next spring, but going ahead and entering a contract with Interstate. They're okay with that, in the in the meantime, though, I've talked to Britt a little bit about maybe an alternate way to do this. Would we could, we could start the contract now and then we could do this community engagement piece and make sure that all the residents and people who need permits are registered. That's going to help tremendously, if we can make sure nobody in town has an issue with parking and everybody understands. Then, once that's ready, we can roll out the paid parking. That could be as soon as maybe even leaf peeping season or something like that, when we do see a spike in tourism traffic. Or it could be next spring, just when we've got, we're we're very sure about the community piece. Um, in my experience, parking, you know, everybody gets, nobody loves paid parking and that's a truth. But if we can really make sure we get all the details correct in the beginning, it's going to have a much easier acceptance by people. And I think there's even things we can talk about, like the best way to structure the payments in the the app so that the user experience is very clear and defined. How are we going to do, what happens if somebody only has cash? Do we want to, do we want to take cash somehow for parking if they're coming and they they don't have the the smart technology they need? And there's some of those questions that I think are lingering, that if we could answer, it would just be a good idea. Britt, I don't know if you had anything you might want to add to that, but that was kind of what the the impetus of that's that aim was.
Yeah, um, I would just like to add, I definitely think this community piece would be huge. I mean, we have people coming in now that are like, can I get my parking pass? And I'm like, oh, no, thank goodness I'm here um, to explain this. But yeah, I do think, you know, we saw it with the housing um, study and several other things. Where we had to print these out and we do have an older um, community here as well. And I do think they're not going to have the smartphones, they're not going to want to get on email, um, we see it with our RTD passes. So I'd love to really um, tackle that with John and make the community feel comfortable about this. And also be able to explain that to them. Um, and I just don't think we're able to do that with this tight timeline right now, I really don't. And I I've don't like people freaking out, you know, I want them to have come, have a good experience and understand that this is not to, you know, cause any like harm or confusion with them. This is really just paid parking more towards the tourist. So um, yeah, that's really all I have to say about that, I I do think it's important, we're already having a lot of confusion. Um, would really like whatever that timeline that you guys think appropriate.
Can you go through, speak a little bit slower, not too slow. Can you go through, speak a little bit slower, not too slow, but regarding the, go ahead and go in contract. But start the residential registration and then potentially start the paid parking this fall. But wouldn't, okay, and that would just be the alternative in between, starting August fifteenth and starting in the spring?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying, okay.
I think, I think the option would be is if we could finish the community piece first, we could, we could turn that parking on anytime because interstate would have the time to develop the website properly. And there's an app that they call Touch and Explore, which points to all the parking resources, as well as it can point to businesses and things like that. And it would allow them to roll that out in a way that would be more effective. So, once we had all of that infrastructure in place, and it really would depend, because you don't want to do it during a, a down season, because, you know, you want to show, you know, good numbers. But once that was all in place, then we could turn the parking on anytime that we feel is the right time. And there, they would be willing to enter this contract with us right now and continue this work, do this, this upfront piece first, and then turn the parking on when it's, when everything, when we know that it's, it's going to work right.
Got it, okay. And for them to get the infrastructure in place as in like the kiosks, or do they have a limit or timeframe when they can do that? I mean, is even leaf peeping season appropriate or?
Might be, it just depends on, we need to get the contract finalized, but the kiosks, it just depend, I think they have the kiosk we need. And we need to do a little bit of work just to make sure that we have the right number of kiosks. We may be able to do it with one or two. And in my opinion, it's, it's kind of nice to not have too many kiosks, but we need to make sure there's an adequate number of them. Because of this QR code issue, it's not, it's just not going to be available to everyone. So we may have to start with a little more than we think, but that's going to also involve the public works team, just to make sure they're in safe locations and that they're installed properly and all that kind of thing.
Okay, alright.
More clarifying questions for Barrett and Jonathan?
Nope, that answered mine, so.
Okay. Well, that will go to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room on, on paid parking? Since being our trial period moved until next spring? Anyone online have a comment? Okay. It's cool. And with that, I'll bring it back to the board. The questions before the, well, the question before the board is, come on faster.
Well, also just to, you know, reiterate, one of the impacts that is articulated in the aim is that fifty seven thousand five hundred that we had allocated. That was going to be potential revenue for parking. Doesn't know if anybody has heartburn over that.
I doubt we'll get very much of it, even if we started on August fifteenth, we'd be lucky to get ten grand, I think. And I don't want paid parking, but I'm not voted, but if we mess this up and roll it out sloppy, it's gonna be painful.
Right, no, I'm, I'm pulling the BOT members to see if there's any heartburn over that. Okay.
We've gone a lot of years without paid parking, so.
We can't hear you, what's that?
We've already gone a lot of years without paid parking. I think we go a few more months.
So I'm just reading this out to her clearly. The, the question before the board is that preferred rollout timeline, does the BOT prefer to proceed with the rollout of the paid parking program on August fifteenth as previously directed or delay the rollout until next spring? To allow for a comprehensive trial period and smoother implementation with residents, employees, and tourists.
So another caveat, just kind of like how you had brought up, oh, maybe we do leaf peeping season. I would say really, I don't know that we'd have to wait until spring, but an appropriate time that you feel comfortable, because even our winter time is busy.
Yeah.
Right? Like there, it's summer, winter, leaf peeping season, you know, it's all, it all tends to be busy. And so I guess I would, you know, I would say that once the infrastructure's in place, once town staff feels comfortable, once people are registered, you make the call and it doesn't have to wait until spring.
That's kind of what I was, I was thinking after this, this came up rather quickly. And so I hadn't thought about that third alternative, but I think you're right. I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Right. So also, just to clarify, though, as I hear myself speaking out loud about that, we're still asking for a trial period?
I think the contract is set up to be renewable if we're, if you find it to be satisfactory.
Okay, and, well, so I guess that, that kind of depends. So if you make the call and it's not until, let's say, no, December fifteenth, our trial period starts then, or do we have a predefined trial period that we are trying to track to?
I, I have a question on that, just, yeah, I mean, could it be long? I mean, is there like, to me, it's like doing it through leaf peeping season would be good. So if it starts December fifteenth, it goes till September thirty first, you know? And I, I don't know if like trial periods are supposed to be a certain amount of time, but.
Well, the, the way that the contract is drafted and the, and the direction that the board gave at the last meeting this was discussed is that, that the trial period would be August fifteenth, I think, to October fifteen. So you, you can all define what that trial period is. I don't know if interstate parking has any, any thoughts on, on a trial period, but you can at least define the start date.
They're making a pretty significant investment for this. And so I know that that's, that's their part of the deal, but I do, I would put that forward that this isn't, you know, this is, you know, I think kiosks are about fifteen thousand dollars each, and the website is, you know, just depending on how it's set up, five to seven thousand dollars. And then this other technology they integrate has some costs too, and then they have some staffing costs. So they're gonna, they're gonna recoup revenue as well. They're gonna be making money as well. But that may be something that factors into their decision.
That factors into their decision for what?
Just about their willingness to, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I think if the contract were too short, they may think, they may have some concerns.
Most of a longer trial period is in their favor.
I think, I think a three-month trial is like you had it set is a good amount of time that gives you the data you need, especially if you can do it during, and that's why I had suggested spring originally, because then you get the summer seasons, you can really see.
You just don't want to have it to go through the mud season. I mean, neither needs to be, needs to be when we're having people.
Spring break for skiing too, or whenever, but just sometime when you know there will be, there'll be heavy volume of traffic.
Well, and just to clarify, we had August fifteenth through October fifteenth, that was only two months.
Right.
So.
That could be fine with them too, then.
Okay. So, yeah, so as long as it gets articulated in the contract as to when that trial period starts, especially if we're saying to you staff, hey, when everything's ready to go, you, you let us know when that feels comfortable. And then we start the trial period from there.
Yeah, agreed.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, totally.
That makes sense.
Right, so we're not.
Yeah, makes sense.
We're not going to set that date today, because you got to figure out when you're ready.
I may need to talk to interstate about that a little bit, because their, their investment that they need to make, they want, they might want. I just need to talk to them and see if they would require anything there, but.
Okay.
They were generally open to this idea, though, so.
Okay.
If they could be at these meetings, that'd be great.
Okay, do you have everything you need?
Yes, so I will go ahead and, we'll go ahead and contact interstate and, and we can work with attorney Madsen to make sure the contract is, is where we need it to be. And then we'll go ahead and work on this implementation project and get that moving along.
Okay. Alright.
Do you need an out of four? You got four nuts? Awesome. Thank you, thanks everyone. Thanks, Britt, thanks, Jonathan. Well, that will go to our second discussion item of the night, the NDD appointment process. With trustees, Corvallone and Mayor Pro Tim Sterling.
Tanya, did you want to go ahead and introduce this?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Well, basically, it's just a discussion item. I know we can't turn back time. But I was out of town during last meeting, and so was surprised to find out that he voted to appoint the person who had the least amount of support from the NDDA instead of the person who had the second most votes, six votes, the other person had one. And because the meeting didn't get recorded, I wasn't able to follow the logic to it. I had other members on the NDDA asking me, because they know I'm on the BOT, like, what's going on? How did this happen? Or other residents saying similar to me. And I guess I was just really surprised. I, I met, I mean, there's nothing against the person you chose. I met that person at the last meeting and he seemed to be a nice person. It's not about that. It's just kind of about where it became that the few members on the BOT seem to know more than the people who voted at our meeting. And we spent time doing that. So that's the main reason I wanted it. I, I'd also gotten feedback, I think, from maybe, I don't remember who, saying, oh, the BOT thought that, you know, there wasn't enough discussion about the candidates, or, I don't even know. So that, that's kind of where I wanted to start. And we can just go from there. I just kind of like a synopsis of last month's meeting would be a good start. And why the person chosen was the person least desired by the board that will be working with this person.
Do you want to add anything to that?
No, no, I think, yeah, no, I think that's put perfectly well.
So, we, we got, we had the meeting, we had the NDDA recommendations, we had Ron Mitchell and Catherine Valen were here to speak in person. Nathan Smallwood and Everett Nielsen were not available that night. And so we talked through the aim and then, and Kate was here as well, executive director of NDDA. And we talked through the aim and then Catherine Valen talked first, kind of just gave her statement about why she wanted to be on the board, and then Ron Mitchell talked about, gave his statement about why he wanted to be on the board. We asked them both questions, you know, Catherine first and then Ron. And then called Catherine back up because some of the questions I asked Ron, I also asked her afterwards, or, you know, after him. And then we had public comment, and then we, there was some more discussion, and then there was a series of motions. Ron Mitchell, there was an appointment for Ron Mitchell, there was a motion for Ron Mitchell, there were no seconds. Then there was an appointment for Nathan Smallwood, who was approved, voted for unanimously. There was an appointment for Catherine Valen, and that failed, or motion, I'm sorry. And then there was a motion for Everett Nielsen, and that was approved.
So it was basically just because nobody else got a second, and it was just kind of like, well, this guy will do, apparently. That's kind of where the board landed? Or was there anything compelling about this person's application that spoke to you?
Well, I'll talk first. I, I think we all could probably just give our own opinions of how it went, but for me, I, you know, I've been critical of the NDDA, you know, this fall at the joint meeting, you know, I just really, you know, a lot of folks in town can be and talk to me about it. A lot of members of, members of the district are, can be critical of the NDDA and talk to me about it. And I brought up this fall, and again, like two weeks ago, that, you know, there's infighting and dysfunction and I asked specific questions about, I mean, that's the big thing for me, is I felt like sometimes there's a lot of really good talent on the NDDA and it just gets hobbled by some of the dysfunction and infighting that doesn't allow it to really reach its potential. Specific questions.
I've never had any rights when I'm on the board, but I think it's between two people.
Yes, yes, and one of them was up for reappointment, and so, and so, so if I could finish. I asked four questions specifically of each of them, you know, to say what I did. How long have you been on the NDDA and both Catherine and, both of them, because the other two weren't here? Both Catherine and, and Ron said they were on it when it first started and off it for a while. And then Ron's been on for the last four years, and Catherine, I think, for the last two, because she finished the term, might be a little different off too. But I asked them about their philosophy of saving money versus spending. That's a big criticism, you know, of the NDDA is that, you know, the, the money gets hoarded away, but it just doesn't get spent. And even people in, in the district, you know, pay, pay into it, are frustrated with that. And, and, you know, I asked for their opinions on that. And then I asked for their opinions on the relationships in the NDDA and how do they function and how they can improve the function of those relationships, and they answered those. And, and then I brought up the fact that when I was at the CMO conference, Kat Correll, I might be saying her last name wrong, was with DCI. She had brought up to me, she was surprised when members in, in the district, business owners in the district, when they went and interviewed them all, there was kind of a surprising number of business owners to her who didn't even know what the DDA was or how, or what it was that existed, or why it existed, or what it did. And so for me, it was just about new, new people on, on the DDA to just give it, some new folks and some new perspectives. That was, that's my synopsis.
Yeah, I mean, Ron spent a lot of money on the Big Springs pavement project, him and Andrew.
That doesn't, that doesn't really.
What do you mean? They, they paid for it. They started it, they.
Ron did or?
Yeah, Ron and Andrew, it was nothing to do with the town, it was DDA project, the Big Springs paving, all that was those guys, they, they saw the need of the. I'm just saying, that's one of the major accomplishments of the NDDA in the past couple of years, literally.
Yes.
Because.
If you're at that meeting, you were at the, you were at the meeting in the, when we had the joint meeting. And I pointed out that that's something they maybe should make clearer that they paid for that, you know, the Big Springs parking and all the repaving that happened last summer.
Well, I mean, that's kind of on the admin who doesn't do the website and do marketing and express. I mean, that's certainly, you can't blame volunteers for not going about and, you know, telling everybody about NDDA. That's why we have a paid admin. And so the other thing he did was the, all the flagging that was wanting, I know it was a fiasco with it. Some of them weren't properly trained last year, but that was a, a good idea that is already going to happen again next year during leaf peeping this year to help with all the traffic problems and all the, the grant, the grants that we created to help give events for the, their security and all that is money we spend, and that was also under the tutelage of that one person. So I just feel like these were like broad sweeping statements against a member of NDDA who actually is one of the few people who's actually accomplished something in his time.
I, I made that about the NDDA. I didn't make it about one person, actually.
Well, I know, but by not choosing the person in that statement, saying you want fresh blood, because you want to see if things get accomplished. I mean, we all do. The problem is, you know, volunteering is, I think, the issue. You know, people don't have much more time than their meeting time, is what it seems like. Because all the committees that we've started don't really go anywhere for years, including like the wayfinding and this and that. And these are really good intended people who have spent money. And I mean, honestly, I don't, the big discussion that we get all the time is we don't just want to spend money for the sake of spending money. We want to make sure it's a project that's going to, you know, increase revenue for the town. With those, the conversation, we, because we could just spend money and blow our account to zero, which, if you look at the budget, it basically does do that. It's just that those projects don't get accomplished. Like, that's a whole nother story. If you're really interested in that, that would be something that you should sit with Kate and have her go over the budget with you and show you what, where it will be budgeted last year and who actually accomplished projects and who did it. And not because they didn't do it because they're not good workers, it's just different logistic reasons, things couldn't get done. because they're not good workers, it's just different logistic reasons, things couldn't get done. So I, I think, I, I just, to me, it was an affront to our board, and it's not the first time. It's happened two other times under the previous mayor, and every time, it's just, it seems to me that it's like you guys are like, you know, saying you know better than the people who actually work daily or monthly or whatever, had, with the people on the board, and for six people to vote for somebody and not for the others, it doesn't sound like they hate this person, or they wouldn't have voted for him, you know? If there's such, if there's such, what's the word you used, toxicity or whatever going on in that? Dysfunction. Why would, why did people vote for that person? They would have voted for the other people. I mean, it was clear as day that, that it's not, that that, that dysfunction is maybe some personality conflict between that person and one other person on the board. It doesn't really translate to the other five people who voted. Anyway, it's just, to me, I, I was out of town, and I was, and if I knew, and it's so silly because the voting margin with us is so small. Like, if I would have just been in town, I would have changed the outcome of the vote. That's how, I mean, that's how important it is to participate, and I should have found signal somewhere and called in, knowing, I had no, I just didn't think. So anyway, that's, I know we're not, can't make decisions in this meeting, and there's nothing, you can't kick somebody off the board for no good reason, so that person's here for the next two years. I'm hoping to add another member to the NDDA, and we're going to have a discussion about it next month, so maybe we can add that person into the board again, because to me, it, it seemed to me, knowing some of the personality conflicts, and it's not, it's more just the, I don't even want to get into it. It just felt really high schooly, and that's just where I wanted to leave it. I don't know.
Thanks, Tanya. Well, Trustee Ty, you also voted in favor. Can you articulate your reasons of why you voted in favor?
I mean, one of the determining factors that, you know, helped me decide is I asked Ron what he had recused himself from. He couldn't tell me one thing he recused himself from, and then he kind of spun off. He didn't tell me one thing, and then he spun off into something that had nothing to do with what I asked him. I mean, he looked at Kate when he said, oh, like, did I recuse myself? He couldn't give me an answer. Yes, it was a quick, quick, short question, but it helped me make my decision.
And so that was enough of a determinant to vote for the one person, for the person who got one vote?
Because I'm, I'm also on the page of, let's get some, some fresh people in there with fresh ideas. You know, Ron's been on it for a long time. I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying I don't like Ron. Not saying Ron hasn't done good things. I'm not saying Ron's a bad person, but, you know, town gave me a chance to get on here and have my fresh ideas and my fresh approach to this, but I, I'd like to give that to somebody else, too. I mean, like I, I keep saying, I'm, I'm still figuring out how this all works.
That's so sad, because he recuses himself all the time. I don't understand. He didn't understand the question.
Maybe I'll, maybe I made a mistake. Maybe it's going to turn out that I'm a terrible BOT member, but we got to find that out, right? Maybe Everett won't be a good, you know, DDA member, but we got to find that out. You know, I want to give him a chance.
I just feel like when a board makes suggestions, when they come up, like, hey, we suggest these two people, we usually tend to go with them. It's just, all right, well.
And, and, and you're right, and maybe down the road, I'm going to realize I've made a mistake, and I, and I'll admit if I make a mistake. I will, but.
Well, I mean, this person.
Can you, can you please let him talk?
This is just my approach to it now. So if I, if I've made you mad, I apologize, but that's how I voted.
Yeah. Now, for me, it wasn't, I, I also thanked Ron for the work he's done, and for me, it was just about new, new blood.
I think the only other point here that is kind of completely separate from who got, who voted for who is that both Tierney and Tanya were out that day, so we were five instead of seven, which, you know, it does change the, the scale.
It does.
Significantly.
It does, but there were four of us, which is the majority of the board, who didn't give a second on Ron Mitchell.
My point is, though, if there had been two more people.
Yeah.
Would have been a different vote.
Perhaps, yeah.
And so, and so with that, before, maybe before we go to public comment, you know, in terms of voting no on Everett Nielsen, and I, and I'll speak to that, is there are lots of things that come to, to us, to the board, to the BOT, from other boards, like the PC, right? But it's always usually around policy, and we have the burden sometimes of where we have multiple data points that we're looking at. And so sometimes things will come to us, but new information will come to us, or there's information that maybe the PC or somebody, some other board hasn't thought about that we have to aggregate into here. For me, this was a personnel decision. This was also a culture decision. This was something that our NDDA board had suggested, hey, these are the folks that we have respect for, that we trust, that we're going to move forward and get things done. And so this was different from one of those policy things that I think comes up to us, right? And typically, who's, who's come to us when these appointments come up is, like, I remember the most recent one to ProSAP, it was, we'd be great with either one of them, you guys decide, which is never, like, you know, that's also a burden in and of itself, but I think for me, the reason why I voted no for Everett Nielsen is that our NDDA board said, these are the folks that we want, and I'm going to, I wanted, I trusted that recommendation. And so that's why I voted no. And so Luke, I don't know, you were the other no. I don't know if you want to speak to anything.
No, I mean, I think that, that sums it up. I mean, I, I feel like, you know, because we were missing, missing trustee Corvallon, who's our liaison to the DDA, and missing trustee Maris, that, you know, it didn't, I wasn't too keen to make sharp, a sharp decision, so.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, having been on the playing commission for a couple of years in the BZA for four, with BZA, and that's what, on the playing commission, you know, where we voted a certain way and the BOT voted a different way, you, you know, you don't, I didn't take it personally, just how it happened. They voted opposite of what the PC voted more than once when I was on the PC, and that's.
Right, but I get, again, I was kind of trying to, those are different things that come before us, right? And that's why I'm saying it's a personnel issue. It is, is, these folks are putting their personal recommendations into it based off how they want to operate as a team and as a system. And so for me, that was a differentiation in my, in my brain personally. That's all.
Yeah. Well, it's good to know now they're doing open voting, so we know who voted for what, and maybe, you know, getting more logic behind people's recommendations might be helpful versus just numbers, a few numbers, you know? Why did the NDDA members vote for who they voted for? It'd be good for us to know that.
Well, just, just one final thing. I mean, you guys didn't even get a chance to ask Everett any questions, like you, and, and still.
I appreciate you bringing that up, because we got to ask.
Fascinating, because Ron didn't understand the question about being recused, when, my God, he's, recuses himself all the time, even if it's a farmer's market thing with.
The thing is, he said he would, he said he's recusing himself all the time, and then he was asked to give an example, and he couldn't, so I was just curious.
He does, though. It's true. I think it's just because he, I don't know, he's this older person. I don't know. But that's just, and, but I mean, to hold that against somebody and then not even speak to the other person, who knows what their answers would have been? But yeah, it's done is done. So anyway, you guys have a great night.
We are going to public comment with that. Any public comment from anyone in the room? Any public comment from folks online? Okay, well, that will come back to the board for any discussion, and, you know, if there needs to be nods or just comments on the, on the questions before the board. I, I, I won't reconsider my vote on Everett Nielsen, no, and I think about any adding new members, firstly, you know, well, that needs to be done on the NDDA level before.
Yeah, it's not.
Correct, yeah, and I would like to see how they function, you know, with, with the people that are on it, who, I know the two new people aren't on subcommittees yet, I know that was the logic used in the meeting to add more people, and you brought it up as an other business, that, you know, there's not enough people on the subcommittees, and that's true. So hopefully you guys will put, you know, Everett and Nathan will get on subcommittee soon.
Want to spend money.
I don't, I, I'm not su, I mean, myself, I'm not super eager to add more people to the board unless there's some pretty sound logic, and I want to hear why the NDDA members would want more folks and, and why they would want the folks they want.
In the, in the end, though, that is an NDDA decision, correct?
Um, adding members, yes. And it's our decision to appoint.
Well, I, I, I actually think it's the board's decision as to whether you would agree to add additional spots.
That's what I want to clarify, because.
Oh, okay.
It's our decision, then we need to.
I think it, you should have a recommendation from the NDDA as to what they would like, but ultimately, it's, it's a board decision as to how many positions there are on.
But I, I was told by Kate, we can have up to 11.
You can.
Right, but you, you're also told by someone else that, that, that the state law is that that, in this case, the BOT or City Council appoints members to the DDA.
Right, you would still have, they would come back, and then you, we would do the same thing over again, and then you could again vote for somebody that was not recommended, and that would always be the case. That can happen, of course, every time.
And, but just to clarify, Jennifer, what you're saying is we have to approve the addition of another member?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes. The governing body approves the, the makeup of the DDA.
Okay, so what would you recommend as a part of our process that they recommend? As, as kind of what we had talked about, they come to us and they recommend the adding of an additional person, but that we would have to say yes in order to then hear candidates to be appointed?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you know, you can go do it a number of different ways, but you can, I would suggest that the DDA provide information as to why an additional member is warranted and needed, and what benefit that would be. I mean, I would suggest that the number of members on the DDA is an odd number of a member for voting reasons.
Right, so adding one doesn't make sense, that, none or two?
That's, that's my opinion. I mean, I think that's effective governance is to have an odd number. And then, you know, can be a decision based on just, first, do you want to add the additional members? And then if the board approves that, then who is the recommended people to fill those positions?
Well, I think first.
Would that be like one meeting they have on, on just deciding if they want more, and then bring that back to us, and then go back and come back with.
Yeah, I mean.
Recommendations of people.
A number, a number of ways, but it's really two decisions. It's, do you want additional seats? And then the second decision is who is filling those additional seats.
Yeah, I think it had to be first that one comes back here, gets approved, and then you ask, you put it out to the public. It would be kind of weird to put it out to the public and then have you guys deny it.
Right.
I think it's probably a two-step process. Makes more sense. So, well, I'll let them know at our next meeting. That's, that will be the process.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to get out of this discussion, Tanya?
No, I mean, there wasn't much I could get out of it. I just, there was no recording of the meeting last week or two weeks ago, which is crazy, because I really just wanted to hear it with my, my own ears, what you guys are reiterating. It's not the same, reading the minutes or whatnot, because they're not the same. So I think that was a big, big flaw in the meeting, but and that's why I want a discussion.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, it was super unfortunate. It would have been good if you've gotten more context. Any more comments, or? Any more comments? Okay. Anything else, Tanya?
No.
Good. Well, with that, we will go to a public comment on non-agenda items. If you have anything you want to talk about that's not on our agenda, now's your time. Anyone in the room? Folks online, any public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, any other business? Okay, I move to adjourned.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you guys, are you all in favor? Do you call it out? Call it out.
Call it up.
Call it up. Thanks, Steve.
Mayor Pro Tim Sterling? Yes. Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned at 9:05.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Brett.